So, dear guests and dear colleagues, a warm welcome to everybody to the Development Committee’s public hearing on the implementation of NDICI Global Europe: how to involve local and regional authorities and communities. I am joined here today by my dear colleagues Charles Gourenz and Udo Bullmann, who will be moderating our panel discussions. In light of the COVID-19 pandemic and the consequences of Russia’s war of aggression against Ukraine and their heavy economic and social impact worldwide, it is now more important than ever that we provide increased and sustained support to our partner countries. With a budget of 79.5 billion euros, the NDICI Global Europe financial instrument serves as the EU’s main tool to contribute to eradicating poverty and promoting sustainable development, prosperity, peace and stability. We need to more effectively meet people’s needs, mitigate risks and vulnerabilities. I would like to stress the importance of enabling local and regional authorities to take on a prominent role in the implementation of this instrument and the EU’s Development Cooperation Policy in general. Our hearing today is an opportunity to discuss how we can ensure the full involvement of local and regional actors as well as the broader participation of local communities in promoting development and building peace. I am looking forward to a fruitful exchange, of course, but now, without further ado, I will pass the floor to my colleague Charles Gourenz, who will moderate the first panel.
Thank you, Chair. In this first panel, we will examine new funding modalities for local and regional authorities under the new NDICI Global Europe, which for the first time will be done through geographic programs and not a thematic program, as was done in the previous instrument. We would like to examine concrete suggestions on how to best target this support and reach the agreed financial allocation in the regulation. The European Union recognizes the need to ensure the participation of local and regional authorities in their key role in contributing to sustainable development and to the implementation of the Sustainable Development Goals at local level. I look forward to a dynamic discussion, so that together we can share and learn from best practices and lessons learned, including under the previous targeted thematic program. We will have the pleasure to hear interventions by our distinguished guest speakers, many of whom are present in the room with us today. Mrs. Marlena Holzner, Head of Unit G2 Local Authorities, Civil Society Organizations and Foundations, NDIC INPA, European Commission; Mrs. Marlena Simeon, Director of Plattformer; Mrs. Fatima Tuh, Abdel Malik, President of the Regional Council of Noakhshot in Mauritania and President of UCLG Africa. Each one of you will have seven minutes to speak, so let me first give the floor to our very first speaker, Mrs. Holzner, for seven minutes.
Hello, good morning. As I said before to Mr. Bullmann, I am very delighted to be here today because I think when it comes to local authority, you and us, we are very strong allies in making them very strong in our partner countries. As it was said before, the framework is completely different: no automatic budget line, which is specifically for local authorities in partner countries, but yet also thanks to the re-upped parliament, I believe, we have an NDICI Global in the recital and aim, which is to have at least 500 million euros spent for local authorities in the geographic budget. Geographic budget, as you know, is the money that is spent by our delegation, and this money can be used for all different kinds of things and also for local authorities. I would like to tell you why we are hopeful that we can reach this goal of 500 million in the seven years, because my colleagues have very intensively analyzed the MIPS, the multi-annual indicative programs of all the delegations we have, the INPA delegations, more than 100, and what we have seen has really positively surprised us in the way that a fair amount, 20 of them, have chosen to have local authorities as one of their main priorities for the seven years. So not as a footnote, not as one project along the others, no. Decentralization, governance as one of their main goals. And we’re intensively working now with these delegations and beyond to make this shift happening, and we have adapted the financial instruments that we still have under NDICI Global, and I have to say again, thanks to the European Parliament, that has pushed very much for that to happen. What I’m talking about, we have, and you will see afterwards and hear about, an example of the city-to-city partnership, where we had the money to do our own projects with headquarters money, and we’re using this now as showing off best practice, lessons learned, so that the delegations now can replicate these good examples and recommendations with their geographies money. What also helps is that the OECD will come out with a study next year, where they will show that these and how, with indicators they have developed, how these projects are actually contributing to achieving to the SDGs. The key word is localization. We have equally with our partners Plattformer and the others agreed, the five FPAs with Global Association of Local Authorities, that they change their work, that they work more with delegation decentralized rather than headquarters, so that together with our experts we have in our facility, TALD facility, who help the delegation to shape proposals and excellence, we need to come together in a concrete approach to help them to do these projects on the ground. What is new and we can equally involve now is TAECS. TAECS, as you know, is a program which was in the past only for the national level, that means European civil servants in database could be asked to, in Europe, can be asked to go for a couple of days to partner countries, help out the local authorities peer-to-peer learning on concrete issues they have. We can tap in now that also for the local authorities, and this is what we are doing. Then we have a new instrument, budget support. In the past, for a majority was also given or mainly given to the national level. We will have in this NDICI Global a couple of regions’ local authorities who will get the direct budget support from the program we have, from the general geographical program. Then I have to say that we are also very happy about the 160,000 euros in addition that the parliament has asked us to use for the cultural cities, although I would say the amount is not important in a sense that is not a big amount. I think it is important in the sense that it really can serve as a good pilot project to show that, as in Europe, if we have a capital for culture in Africa, in Asia, that can trigger development, and our partners are very happy that we can do this pilot with them together and in this way then show also that this can be replicated, not with this specific money but with the other money coming out from the geographic budget. Finally, an observational question from our part. In this work we do, as you know, the new kind of instrument, I would not say, but the way we do development is Team Europe approach. We coordinate and we put also financially also, yeah, financially also a part on the table and have Team Europe initiatives. For the time being, we have not created a push for Team Europe approach for local authorities, but we are in discussion with colleagues who do a Team Europe initiative on democracy and gender equality. It’s a global one, and there if you would have an indication, if you think that that is a way also to push local authorities and we should also try for visibility or for having more funds to go in this direction. Thank you so much.
Merci, Madame Holzner.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Holzner. I’d like to give the floor to Mrs. Simeon, seven minutes.
Merci beaucoup. Thank you very much. I will speak in English actually this morning. It’s a pleasure to be here today and to finally hold a hearing on this very important topic for us, of course. I’m representing Plattforma, so a pan-European coalition of local and regional governments and their representative associations, all involved in development cooperation, international partnerships. The recognition of the role of local and regional governments has been a long journey, as Marlena just said. The thematic line has disappeared, but we can see that in the new instrument there is a recognition of the role of local and regional governments in many policy area within the geographic programs, as well as a recognition of decentralized cooperation, so city-to-city, region-to-region as a modality in the international partnerships policy. It also imposes the mandatory consultation of local and regional governments by the EU delegation, and also there is still the thematic line dedicated to development education and awareness raising by local and regional governments, which is quite also important for us. We believe that no policy actually or no initiative from the EU can work in the long term and have a positive impact without strengthening the local governance system at the same time. So we believe that our involvement is essential also for the success of the Team Europe initiative, for the global getaway in terms of investments, and it’s necessary therefore to ensure that the competencies and the financial and fiscal capacities of local governments are appropriate. So in this time of crisis, as it was mentioned, with prices soaring, with inflation, with the consequences of the pandemic, you know that local governments are responsible at the front line for everything, from education to waste and water management, to social inclusion, to local economic development, to environment protection and biodiversity, to digitalization and delivering quality public services. Issues that matter for achieving the 2030 agenda and the Sustainable Development Goals. So we believe that decentralized cooperation is one of the key modalities which should be at the heart of EU action and to face and to respond to the challenges that the world faces, allowing also local governments to develop trajectories in their territories characterized by an integrated approach, multi-level and multi actor and participatory approach. I can give you three examples of decentralized cooperation and relevant examples. First of all, in the aftermath of the start of Russia’s war against Ukraine, for instance, or just after the port blast in Lebanon, we immediately saw a wave of reactivated or newly activated partnerships and cooperation, twinning between municipalities to engage directly with local communities and municipalities, to hear directly from them what are the needs and be able to assess the most urgent needs with them and to generate a first pipeline of short-term support: humanitarian, educational, administrative solidarity. Another example can be on sustainable energy between the city of Lille, for instance, in France, and the city of Ouzda in Morocco, which aim at strengthening the capacity of public agents in both territories, in the field of sustainable energy and efficiency in buildings, to develop professional training, to promote this economic sector and to raise awareness about energy saving among the local population of both territories. We also have many examples in the Eastern Partnership and in particular on green solutions for the development of municipalities. So what we are now asking for, or the continuity, I could say, five things, so that the EU delegation continue to strengthen their political dialogue with local governments. It’s happening with the national associations of local governments in some countries, but it’s really on a one-to-one basis. So it’s difficult to have this general approach to the EU delegation. So indeed, we are going more to EU delegations. We are coming back, I would say, to these bilateral exchanges with the EU delegation. There is a TALD facility we also have with other FPAs. We have engaged with various delegations and in particular Cuba, Colombia, Bolivia and various countries also in Africa, and we will hear more about it. But this has to be continued and systematized, I would say. And EU delegation to be trained on how to insert also local authorities in their programming, what kind of modalities they can use. It’s still unclear sometimes on their side. The second point I would like to make is that funding instruments should be territorialized, and you were mentioning TAECS and twinning, so this is really a rollout that we are experimenting now beyond the Eastern Partnership, which is positive because it’s about public expertise exchange. We also push for this budget support for local authorities, which was not possible, if you remember well, few years ago, so that’s very positive as well. Why not to create local framework partnership agreements with national associations as well? Or to have a facility for project preparation? Or to simplify the procedures for call for proposal? Decentralized cooperation programs still in the air, very important in the past, as you mentioned, 57 projects financed directly by the European Union. Now it’s a bit on a bilateral basis to determine that. Again, having programs for continuity is very important in this area, and why not think about delegated management in some cases? The third thing that I wanted to say, and maybe I will stop because I don’t have so much time, is that a tracker should be put in place. Indeed, NDIC did an amazing job in analyzing of the MIPS and maps, but it’s rather with limited resources. It was very constraining work. So a tracker to systematize as well the analysis on how local and regional governments are involved and are spending, or the money is going through directly local governments or on decentralization, that would be very interesting as well. A last point may be on the involvement of local authorities in the global citizenship education. You may know that recently, at the beginning of November, the global education, the declaration on, the European Declaration on Global Education to 2050 was adopted in Dublin by member states and supported by the European Commission, and this is where also, for the first time, local governments were invited to participate in the process of building this declaration to show as well how their role is important for sustainable development, to bring sustainable development in the municipalities and in the communities. So I’ll stop there just to say that we are engaged and we will keep being steering this European movement to strengthen local governance through the leadership of local and regional governments worldwide. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Mrs. Abdel Malik, for seven minutes.
Thank you very much, Chairman. Ladies and gentlemen, first of all, allow me to wish you a happy 2023 in advance and a happy festive season, end-of-year festive season. So I’d like to thank the Development Committee of the European Parliament for inviting the UCLG, United Cities and Local Governments of Africa, here to talk about their opinions on the NDICI, which has been set up in order to organize cooperation relations between the EU and partner countries with the involvement of local and regional governments. So here I’m speaking as the President of the UCLG Africa, which represents 16,000 local and regional authorities that is based in Africa and covers the whole of Africa. We have 15 members and a Pan-African Council of 45 members, with the Bureau bringing together the five regions of Africa. We have diplomatic status in Morocco, where our headquarters is. We represent therefore more than 350 million Africans. Honorable members, ladies and gentlemen, I’d like to confirm the fact that the UCLG is very pleased with the cooperation with the EU because it has enhanced our legitimacy and efficiency serving local Africa. We welcome particularly the excellent cooperation with the relevant department and directorate in the European Commission, especially those working on civil society and local authorities. Involving local and regional authorities is being done differently since 2013, the 2013 Communication of the European Commission, looking to boost cooperation with local and regional authorities for better and more effective development. You’re recognizing us as public authorities in a situation where we can help, and in the past, local and regional authorities were seen as non-state actors, so there’s a break with that approach. This new situation has allowed the UCLG Africa and other continental and international authorities to conclude a first framework agreement for partnership with the EU in 2015, an FPA covering 2015 to 2020, and to renew this on the 12th of September last, covering 2021 to 2027. The implementation of this framework agreement has allowed us to support institutional development and the capacity of local and regional authorities and their associations within Africa. It means that they are key players when it comes to implementing national development policies and continental agendas and global ones such as the 2030 agenda, SDGs, the Paris Accords and the 2063 agenda of the African Union. So this paradigm shift has also allowed the local authorities in Africa to take part in 2020 and 2021 when it came to the consultation process for 2021 to 2027 when it comes to cooperation. We have mobilized a lot of national consultants in order to provide support to the local and regional authorities when drawing up their roadmap in cooperation with the central government and the EU in order to promote integration and the integration of their national plans in EU cooperation. We have 36 local authority roadmaps that have been drawn up in Africa. They have been included in the EU integration process, but unfortunately we have a mixed bag. We don’t have a uniform implementation. But I talked about the paradigm shift that was brought about by the 2013 communication, and this has played a very important role, but we still fall short of what needs to be done. This applies to the partner countries and EU delegations. Taking into account the local and regional authority roadmaps, however, was decisive progress for European cooperation. Now, we have the NDICI, and according to that, the objective is to make sure that the cooperation has more of an impact on the ground by improving the living conditions of the population. We’ll only be able to deliver this if the privileged sectoral approach in EU cooperation is complemented by what the local and regional authorities do and that we implement sectoral policies. The impact of this will mean that cooperation will help contribute to the emancipation of the peoples involved. Now, the roadmap. The local and regional authorities want to make sure that national public policies have this international component but are also adapted to what is happening on the ground. The means used to support these sectoral national policies, including budget aid by the EU, have to, of course, be included in the budgets of the local and regional authorities to meet the expectations of the people, and so there is room for improvement. And the UCLG Africa and the EU and all those who have signed the FPA have to work hand in hand to make sure that the European cooperation has a better impact on development and cooperation. Now, the UCLG is also pleased that in February 2022, the African Union EU Forum, bringing together local and regional actors within the framework of the EU and AU and heads of state and government. This last forum, bringing together all of the players that I mentioned, took place from the 14th to the 18th of February 2022, and it highlighted the will of the authorities on both sides to tackle the challenges that both unions face: women’s emancipation, youth opportunities, migration management, including climate migration, conflict prevention and making sure there is peace, and helping the private sector and civil society. Now, first of all, the forum believes that it’s important to boast local and regional authority associations within the framework of the EU-Africa partnership. Secondly, to recognize decentralized cooperation as a vital mechanism in order to breathe new life into the partnership between the EU and Africa, and as a way of making sure that we have people-to-people multilateralism and a human face. This is key for what we’re doing, especially when it comes to implementing the NDICI. Thirdly, to come up with an EU-African Union program that is robust. We want to boost capacity building, and we might want to make sure that the youth have opportunities, and perhaps there could be an EU-Africa Erasmus program. We want to include local and regional authorities when it comes to managing migration flows between the EU and Africa. And of course, we also want to involve the diaspora in order to make sure that we can talk about migration around the table. Now, there’s the digital transformation and the digital transition and the green transition. We want to make sure that we improve African people’s access to energy sources, especially renewable energy. We have the EU-Africa partnership, and it has to also be underpinned by culture and our common heritage to bring people together. Ladies and gentlemen, the UCLG Africa has great hope that these recommendations will be taken into account when implementing the new cycle of cooperation between the EU and Africa. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you very much for that presentation. We can now open up the floor for questions and answers. The rule is as follows: everyone will have two minutes for their questions. First of all, we will have the round of questions, and then the three panelists will have the opportunity to respond. So I’ll open the discussion now. For our colleagues to take the floor. I know that two minutes is not much, but we do need to restrict time so that everyone has chance to speak. Who wishes to start? Please, go ahead. You’re welcome. Please, please, go ahead, please. So we're not following the usual protocol today. Thank you very much, Shao, for your flexibility.
I'm going to pose a fairly easy question to approach, but hard to answer. I'll be speaking Spanish. I'm sure you'll understand me. We agree on the basic underlying principles. There's a broad consensus that it's not feasible to have efficient cooperation, bringing on board civil society and local players for many reasons. Being efficient is the only way to address the specific traits of each territory and addressing the needs of each community and so forth. To do this, we require participation and collaboration. Civil society is very much based at local level. And we need them for cooperation. We've heard that from all of you. One key thing is the role of women, which needs to be beefed up. When we put civil society and local authorities at the forefront, there's an implicit link between women's participation and what's happening at the local level. We see eye to eye on this. So we need to set out the general framework and streamline it. We do agree on the underlying principles. But it's a matter of setting out the framework properly. Just a question, if I may. There are certain countries in which it's very tricky to have a normalised institutional relations. These are countries in the global south. These countries are authoritarian in nature. We have countries in the Middle East, for example, Western Africa and so forth, authoritarian regimes. So how can we hark back to institutional relations with these countries? To do this, we need local authorities. There is room here for more democratic dialogue, perhaps in countries like, say, Iran or Afghanistan, Syria. There's a door ajar, perhaps, for institutional dialogue in these countries. We can't turn to the local authorities for help. So when we talk about local-level cooperation, I think we are ensuring dialogue with countries. We can only do this at local level if we want to ensure the building up of democracy because we can't turn to the central authorities. Is that right?
Thank you very much. The next speaker will be our colleague, Ms Gonzalez.
Thank you very much, Mr Gurens. Thank you, Mr Bullman, for organising this debate. I think it's a key debate. And we have to find local solutions to global problems. It's vital. So I'd like to thank the members of Platforma. We've been working with you over the years. And I really think that this is key. If we want to make progress, if we want to be efficient, if we want to have policy consistency, and if we want to bridge the gap between what we say and what we do. We know that decentralised cooperation doesn't exist in all member states. You've got Germany, Spain, Belgium, where this is implemented more and accounts for a high percentage. But if we really want to make sure that local cooperation is efficient, I'm wondering what legislative reform would be necessary in the EU in order to do that? What would the Commission Directorates General have to do? What changes would they have to make in order to be able to do this? Now, project implementation. We've got delegated cooperation in the case of national agencies such as ESI in Spain. So I'm wondering to what extent that's possible with regional agencies in the EU? Is the Commission considering this? Implementing projects through working with regional authority agencies? So I was wondering. I would like to congratulate Platforma. But I'd also like to know whether this network we are building is growing. Are you getting more and more municipalities? Or is it becoming more difficult to work, have this bottom-up approach? Is it difficult for people to understand that it's not just about national governments in the EU? Local cooperation also allows working hand in glove with the host countries. And that involves the diasporas as well. It's easier for the local communities to understand that there are problems in the global south and other countries and to link up the work done by the diaspora and immigrants and the Commission. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'd now like to give the floor to Mr Luca.
Thank you, Chair. For me, I would like to focus on the implementation. Because for me, in the first place, Energy Global Europe is such a big tank ship. And I always like it when policy is really implemented and we see and we can cross-check on what we developed on the political level. And especially like coming from the European level and bringing it down to the local communities, I think is a very, very important approach. And also the localisation, I like very much the idea. So that's why I would like to ask you concretely, like, from your experience so far, what are the hurdles and obstacles that are right now in front of you for the next future? Or asking from the other angle, like, what would be, in your opinion, like, really the next step to really scale up or transform or do this implementation really very much concretely so that we can really have a step forward? So if you can concentrate on two or three concrete issues that I would like to know, thank you.
Thank you very much. Now the floor goes to Ms Herzberger. Fofana. Please, go ahead with your question. Okay, first of all, I would like to thank all of today's speakers for their presentations. I have one question. How can we introduce the diaspora into this? And I think this was mentioned by Ms Abdel Malik in her report. Because if you look at my member state, Germany, we have a very large diaspora, and they are involved in local projects. This diaspora is very active. And I can assure you that in my region alone, almost all West African countries are represented. But how can we introduce the diaspora so that their work is more visible? So that it's also in line with or in conjunction with local authorities? Because we tend to work with local authorities. But often, we come up against problems and you need to go to the central government. How can we work together with local authorities, municipalities, civil society organisations directly without having to turn to the central government first of all? It's not banned, of course, but often we are blocked. And I can tell you that because I was an activist for many, many years. And it's always an issue when we have the projects. Everything's set up okay. But then there is almost something stopping us. And then they tell us that we have to go via the central government. But I would like to also thank Platforma. I was involved in that project. And I have to say, it's really an extraordinary project. I wasn't familiar with it. But I look forward to getting to know you better next week. I'd also like to thank Mr Bullman as well. And Mr Gurens. Thank you very much. Fofana Herzberger, that's your full name. Now it's right. But did you say Fofana? Okay. No other questions. So I'd now like to give the floor to myself. The representative of the Commission talked about direct budgetary aid. This is quite interesting. Does this mean that you are planning sectoral budgetary aid? You know that we have direct budgetary assistance when we send the money directly to the partner country. And then we have a sectoral approach, which is when we work in the area of education or health in certain countries. Second question. Who evaluates the projects in general? I have a suggestion. Could we perhaps focus on the structure of the south for these evaluations? This could allow our partner countries to improve their capacity in this area. Thirdly, the 500 million, is this enough? And I ask that question because there are states where nothing works. Let's look at the Democratic Republic of Congo, for instance. If you wanted to develop certain regions or municipalities there in order to build pillars of local governance. Because if the state gives you the funds to do that, that's good. You could do something about it. I myself have been involved in decentralised cooperation in Senegal. It works very well there because they have a minister responsible for decentralisation. So each time we wanted to contact them, there was a contact point there we could call them. But what do we do in countries where the state is absent? Where there is no structure? Where local communities really don't have any means of making progress? And my final point. And this is a question for the Commission. Could we have a local partner, which is not necessarily a municipality, but a school, for instance? Could that be a legitimate partner, based on what you were saying before? Thank you. Could you provide assistance to a hospital, for example, which has its own, which is an individual legal entity? Or do they need to have the status of a municipality or local authority or some kind of administrative unit? So you each have three to four minutes for responses. So as long as you have something interesting to say, we won't cut you off unless Mr Bullman starts to get a little bit nervous, which is not yet the case.
Yeah, thank you so much. So I would try to be precise and not forget anybody. On the first question that was asked on the women, women and local authority. Of course, they are part and part of the same parcel in the sense that, of course, we all know, and I'm sure it has been also the case of most of you, you have not been elected first in the European Parliament, I would guess. But it all starts at the local level. That's why, you know, our partners, UCLG Africa, has a very strong focus in their contract and their capacity building for women. They have a network for women politicians. And in everything they do, they really mainstream women. Because we really believe that the level where this starts, that women become active in a democracy, being politicians themselves, is the local level. And the same thing if we talk local authority services, that we have to know what the women need and they have to have a say in all that. The same will we do with women, with youth. Because, you know, we also believe that youth has to have a role and a voice. So equally, our partners and we in our financial assistance, we mainstream youth. On the second point of, it was Madame Gonzalez, on whether we can, with legislative measures, you know, ask the member states to go also decentralised cooperation. I'm afraid I would not think that the European Union can force them. What we do is we try to have built best practice. There was also a Team Europe, or there is a Team Europe portal where, you know, all those member states who have decentralised cooperation were called to put in their good examples so that others might follow them, seeing what good work can be done. And on a question whether we can use or ask regional agencies to implement our local policy and also the projects on the ground. Yes, it is possible. And in this case, a delegation, our office, when they do a call and saying, this is the project, who wants to implement it? A regional agency can equally apply and can implement this project. That's possible. Mr Luca, on your questions on the hurdles. For me, very openly and frankly, one of the biggest obstacle to, that does not allow us to replicate very good work, what we do, you know, on a really large scale. It's simply size. When we talk local authority, we talk small money. We talk many, many beneficiaries. We talk, in many cases, of beneficiaries who do not have the capacity. If I give them money, what the president is interested in giving them direct budget support is meaning I give you a bank of money. I trust that you can implement it. And we see that in many local authorities, they just do not have the capacity, as a German town, to really implement the money, to do it in a transparent way. So there is a kind of accompanying measures that we have to do with the help of the associations, with our assistance, to get them there that they can do it. So it is in itself, I think, a limited approach that cannot replicate it in all the countries to the same extent because the situation is so different. And we talk about very small beneficiaries. Having said that, what can be done and what are we doing is that we do involve the delegations more. And we ask them to have more policy dialogue with the national associations so that they are aware what is happening and they are aware that there is a demand. And they would have to do more on that. And equally, what we do is we have not only bilateral contacts, but my colleagues have seminars where, you know, they group together 20 of our experts and delegations, explain them, say, okay, we understand. These are small beneficiaries. We understand it's a lot of work. Here, the expert, they will help you. This we can do for you. So that it's a full package. They understand the demand from the side of the local authorities. We give them in hand the instruments in kind of rucksack approach and say, look, go there, you can do it. And then we hope that is, that we can really scale it up. On the diaspora and the cooperation with the diaspora, the best instrument to our knowledge is decentralised cooperation. Because in that case, you have the diaspora, who together with your own local authority can really help in the countries where they come from. The President's question on the general support, yeah. This direct support to the local authorities, of course, because of the nature of it, is limited. And we will have very handful of examples this time as a pilot. And we are still in the phase where it is negotiated with a few from Latin America who have this capacity or bigger in terms of that. And there, I believe, it's both a general budget support, but it's also sectoral. In terms of evaluating whatever project that is on the ground, that is always done first in a delegation. So it's not So it's not centrally. This is the new approach under Endiki, that we believe that the experts are really sitting on the ground. So they do it and that's in big contrast to before where it was my unit who say, okay, we do this decentralized cooperation. This time it is them and that is the way it's done. We do, in fact, what you say. We do a lot of capacity building. That's the main focus of all the instruments that we still have available. So all these FPAs with the global association, we ask them, one thing is the main thing this time. You do capacity building on the local, national level. Less headwaters, less process, more on the ground. So in terms of money, support, accompanying. So unfortunately, we have the experience that some delegations are very open to local authorities, others are less. But they need to have a partner which comes and knocks on a door, is informed, knows what's going on and can be a reliable partner. And that's why the attention, also the money, the resources is, needs to be in there. On the question of the 500 million, money is never enough. Of course, it's not enough. We will be able to, I think, in a midterm review, give you a more trajectory, what we think, what would be. Whether we are on the 500 million path, whether it is more, that I think we will be able to give you more in concrete terms. On the local partners, yes. I mean, we can do a lot of service implementation where we have not only local authorities as implementing partners, but it can equally be local hospitals.
Thank you very much. Unfortunately, we do have some problems with the time. We need to start the second panel very soon. So if you could be as concise as possible, please. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I'm going to be focusing on the role of women in Africa. Women in Africa play a very important role in development. But also when it comes to families being resilient. They are responsible for feeding their family because they're responsible for 80% of food, providing food, heating the home. They're responsible for choosing how to prepare meals, how to cook them and they shoulder this huge burden. So we need to provide them with support. Often, they're illiterate, vulnerable. There cannot be development when half of the population is sidelined. That's why we realized in UCLG Africa that it's extremely important to involve women and we have a female local authority association. It's part of UCLG and the chair is a member of the executive board that is responsible for managing our organization from a political point of view. So this will make sure that we have better representativity for women. It's one of the rare structured networks, at least as far as local authorities are concerned. So I'd really like to thank the European Union and the European Commission for providing us with support, for setting up the network, but especially for its action plan, which is extremely ambitious. And of course, they have a specific action which is no children on the streets of Africa. This is very important. And that covers youth because, as you know, we're talking about more than 300 million young people in the whole of Africa. So think about that in relation to the population of the US. And I think this is the best investment in order to prevent terrorism and crime. So we can support young people and the UCLG works very hard, hand-in-glove with the European Commission on this because we want to make sure that we help these population segments through capacity building, training and we really want to involve them in active life. Now, on diaspora. It's extremely important because it contributes to local development. There are people who have maintained their ties with their country of origin. They have built bridges and it's an opportunity for them to help people understand their country, the heritage of their country, the culture. This is something extremely important that they can share with their host countries. So the diaspora has been behind projects, even small projects, that really focus on the key areas of development and they're often the ones behind these important projects. So it is very important to involve the diaspora locally and in the countries they live in. Because often, we fund projects in the country of origin through the diaspora and I think that that's an important way of enhancing the value of what they're doing. I think this is very important because it means that they can share the culture and heritage of their country. We often need a lot of money. So what we have here, of course, falls short of what we need because it's always less than what we need in order to achieve our ambitions as Africans. There's a lot that remains to be done. We're countries that were greatly affected by climate change, we're vulnerable and we also... Oh, yes, okay, I'll wrap up. We really need support. We need support for our green transition and for our energy transition because there are key climate change events and they do really deal a blow to Africa. And of course, women are the first victims of these events. When we provide support to women and young people, there can be real positive, sustainable development changes. I think it's women and young people who will drive this. Thank you.
Just one minute. Well, first of all, I would like to thank some of the MEPs who really have stood by us over the past few years. We've had a long journey. We also have colleagues at the back of the room who've been very active just when it comes to countries in crisis. We have several ongoing projects in Iraq and in Lebanon. For example, there's one project funded by the EU Trust Fund with, we're working with local authorities and national authorities on specific subjects such as waste management and information projects as well. Now, on women, yes, we have European and African networks to get women involved in local political life, the same for young people. And we really are focusing on our objectives. And one final point on what our main concern is. So sometimes it's difficult. There's a lot of capacity building that needs to be done. It needs to be done in the long run and sometimes it doesn't always happen as we wish. I've forgotten what my last point was, so I'll end there. Thank you very much. I'm not able to say too much because we don't have very much time. So I'll give the floor now to Mr Bullman to start.